Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:37. I would like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the roll call for those Board of Education members who are present. Vice President Lee, do you mind performing the roll call for us, please?
Thank you, no problem. Trustee Fields? Trustee Sutton Kennedy?
Present.
Trustee Espy? Trustee Townsend?
Here.
Vice President Lee, I'm here, and President Hawkins?
I am present. Thank you, Vice President Lee. We have six Board of Education members who are present and one who is absent. At this time, we'd like to invite everyone in attendance to join us in reciting of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the acceptance of the agenda, and before we take a motion to move that, I would like to make one adjustment to the agenda to move Item A under Action Items under Human Resources to E. So that we know, we know that we have many of our contracts tonight we're approving for principals or we're considering for approval, and I want to make sure that we are honoring and respecting their time for being here because it is winding down and fall will be here very quickly. So if they don't want to hang out with us, they can go ahead and leave if they would. Yeah, just, yeah, I just made, I just, yes, that's, that's correct. I just, I just made it a whole other letter.
I support.
Thank you so much. So at this time, if I could have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Trustee Sutton Kennedy, I move to accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you. A motion has been made to accept the agenda that has been amended by Trustee Sutton Kennedy. Is there support for this motion?
I support.
Thank you. Supported by Trustee Espy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Now that takes us to public comments. And I am not sure if any public comment cards have come in. Ms. Hayes, just let us know. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Haynes. Next, that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Trustee Fields moved that the Board of Education approve the July 14, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. Number two, personnel matters are per the presented list dated July 30, 2025, new hires and resignations.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Vice President Lee.
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to our action items under number six, and at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Zachary Ross.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'll ask if Ms. McCarty will come. She led a rigorous process for the candidates that are being moved forward today, and she would like to share information first about Ypsilanti International Elementary School principal recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent and members of the Board. Thank you for having me up here tonight to talk about the process. So we went through a rigorous process where we had a three-part interview. So we had to compile the team of parents, administrators, and colleagues to interview, do interview questions, have a performance task, have a behavior event interview. And then after that, we sent out a one-hour timed performance task, which was then turned back in. Once we took all four of those components and scored them, we took the two highest candidates, moved them forward to the Superintendent of Schools for the fit-to-school process. The team compiled a list of additional questions that they would wanted the superintendent to consider asking the candidate. And then based on that, the superintendent brought forward her recommendation from the fit-to-school, and then we're bringing for your review and potential approval the candidates that went through that process. And the candidate for Ypsilanti International is Timothy Othier. So any, any, oh, do you guys, would you guys like some background? Okay, so I have his resume here. He comes with extensive background. He comes to us most recently from Liberty Middle School in Canton. He served from 2015 to current. Prior to that, he was an elementary principal at Bates Elementary in Dexter. And he served prior to that as an assistant principal in Dexter. And he was also the director and founder of Inkstains Youth Writer Camp. He worked as a classroom educator in Celine for two years. And prior to that, from 1996 to 2004, he was a high school teacher in North Farmington, in Farmington High School.
Thank you, Ms. McCarty.
You're welcome.
At this time, is there a motion for the approval of the principal at Ypsilanti International Elementary School?
Trustee Sutton Kennedy, I move that the Board of Education approve the principal at Ypsilanti International Elementary School contract of Timothy Othier with the commencement date of August 4, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Sutton Kennedy. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Vice President Lee.
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. Are there any questions for the Board? Vice President Lee, you have any questions? I don't know what you're asking.
Are we able to hear from Mr. Othier? Is that part of the process or not?
After we approve.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You want to wait until after? Okay. Yes.
Oh, okay. Maybe I can ask that question.
Oh, no. So I just wanted to make sure we just were supposed to receive the resume.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so a motion has been made by Trustee Sutton Kennedy, supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Timothy Othier. Is that correct? It is. At this time, Superintendent Zachary Ross, would you like to invite?
Yes. Congratulations and.
Thank you very much. I feel this is a great honor, and I'm very privileged to be joining Ypsilanti Public Schools. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's okay. Well, welcome aboard. We are, we're glad to have you. Congratulations, and we're excited for a new school year. I know our Board members might have some, some questions to ask you, if that's okay with you.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not sure who was first. Vice President Lee, did you have a question?
Yes, can I ask why did he left, to leave Liberty Middle School to work with Ypsilanti?
There's several reasons.
Can I ask that?
Why Ypsilanti?
Why Ypsilanti?
Yes!
For starters, I used to live right over in Normal Park. I lived there for about 13 years and loved it. We only moved because I was working in Dexter, and my wife works on that side of town, in Ann Arbor, so we moved there. But looking at all the great stuff that's happening here, I'm really impressed with the organization, how schools are being redefined, and the growth, not to mention just the overall community of staff here. It's a very compelling place to want to be. And I actually want to join a team that I can really fit in with and make a positive difference for all the kids here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
Hi, Trustee Espy. I am wondering, what are, do you, have you identified some things that you're hoping for to see, to bring forward into the, into the lives at this point, or goals that you have?
Not quite yet. I haven't yet met the team, but from all accounts, they're a wonderful group of teachers. And what I've identified is I want to continue the momentum and then start building with all the great, you know, the good stuff that I'm learning today alone, just sitting here learning about visible learning. My mind is spinning, but I'm like, okay, these things matter. How do we integrate the good stuff that's there with the new things that are coming onboard without making it rough?
Yes.
I don't necessarily have a question. I'm very impressed with your resume. I love the fact that your roots have been, as far as, you know, your education has been in Ypsilanti at Eastern as well as your experience within Washtenaw County Schools. And of course, the most important thing is that you went to Michigan State University.
Go Green, right? Unexpected, but I like it.
Yes. All right. Any other comments from the Board? Well, thank you again. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Ready for the next candidate?
We are ready for the next candidate.
Right. So now we have the exciting news of welcoming back an old friend in a different role. So we are proposing for your review Celeste Green, and she brings to us extensive, extensive experience. She has an MA in Education from Wayne State University. I'm sorry, she doesn't come from Michigan State, guys, I'm sorry. But she brings so much experience. She worked in Detroit at the University of the Property, excuse me, Preparatory Academy Middle School. She has been working in our multi-language, oh, wow, this is great. She's been working in immersion for quite some time with us, working with the Spanish for kids, and just bringing a love for learning other languages to the district. She followed that same extensive process. I know it's like, you have that whole group of people and parents, and that extensive interview process is quite something to get through. So we're very happy as a HR talent committee to bring forward Celeste Green for Pointe.
All right. At this time, is there a motion for the approval of the principal at Ypsilanti? All right. At this time, is there a motion for the approval of the principal at Ypsilanti Puentez? Did I say that right? Multilingual school.
Madam President, trustee Espy, I move that the Board of Education approved the principal at Ypsilanti Puentez Multilingual School contract of Celeste Henderson-Green with the commencement date of August 4, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by trustee Espy. Is there a support for this motion?
Trustee Townsend, support.
Who got that? I'm gonna put all y'all names down. All right. All right. The motion was made by trustee Espy, and I hear it was supported by Vice President Lee. And yeah, I know you, yes, trustee Townsend also was like right here. Yeah, we do. I'm sorry. I was just making a quick note. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations!
You're invited to come to address the board. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I am so honored. And I, this has been a long labor of love, but it has been such a journey and a great, when I've been with this program since day one with the very first group. And now we're going to be opening up a building with upwards of 150, 60 students, somewhere around there. And it's been, and I am just looking forward to just taking this to the next level. I know all the students. I know all the teachers. I know where the, what the brilliance is, and it's everywhere. And where some challenges might be. And I am just so looking forward to building that bilingual brilliance that I know every student has at that school. So thank you so much for your trust, your support and guidance. And just, I mean, this is, Ypsilanti is, if anybody's looking on YouTube or whatever, this is the place to be. This is a place of support. It is a place of innovation. It's a place where you belong. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
I don't know if I had any questions for me. I don't know. I'm like, sorry.
Board members might have comments, maybe questions. You know, we have, we have seen you since day one here in the trenches, building and growing, developing this outstanding program. And so you're not a stranger to us, but I'll stop talking. I'll let my, the board members ask questions if they would like to or make any comments for.
No questions, but a comment. I'm so happy for you.
Thank you so much.
I'm so proud of the district.
Yes.
I know it's gonna seed and we are gonna be wonderful. You are gonna be wonderful. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the support.
Yes.
And I'm proud of you too, Green. We met on the boots on the ground.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. I had my boots on the ground.
Yes, yes. We were getting people to come and now look at you, you know what I'm saying? So I'm so proud and happy that you're moving one more step up in that, you know, providing for the babies.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
I would just like to say again, congratulations. I think this has been a phenomenal journey to something that's going to expand to something beyond our wildest dreams. I think this is a large testament of when we say, come work for this district. Let us, you know, groom you, get you into leadership positions and also, you know, extend the longevity of your career here. So I'm very proud of your entire team. I know this is gonna be a success. And I just, you know, I look forward to coming and visiting and seeing the growth. And I just think this is a good thing for the district. Thank you to all of administration superintendent for seeing this through. The best is yet to come.
That's right. Thank you so much. And I do have to acknowledge my team, too. Mary Ann Jaeger and Liz Serment and Dr. Lowell Pissel, everyone, of course. But these are people who we just took every minute that we could to really work at building this program. And, you know, getting the guidance and the support from the administration and from the board just allowed us to just dream and like make that dream come true. So, and this is just the beginning, like literally just the beginning. So thank you. I won't take up any more time. Thank you so much.
Oh, maybe one more second.
One more.
I just wanted to say congratulations as well. As a parent of a student in the program and having worked directly with you, I am so excited.
Thank you so much.
To have received this nomination and us having accepted and approved you as principal, it just makes me even more excited about next year because I've seen how much you and the team put into this program, even above and beyond your responsibilities right now. So I am, I just want to say congratulations and how excited I am for what that means for this program. And I can't wait to see what is to come.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I would also like to comment. We are just very excited. I mean, I am very excited about this. I've seen this labor of love from all of you going through this process. You have been amazing ambassador to the district. I met you outside of the district and immediately learned about the Spanish immersion program.
I couldn't stop talking about it.
So it's very exciting to see somebody who has had such a passion for this work and who has been with it and investing in it, continue their journey here. And I love to see this like growth from within the district as well. So thank you. Thank you. And I'm very excited to see where we go next.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's support and comments. And I am just as excited, if not more. I just can't, I can't wait until we open those doors and see those kids and see what, see what the brilliance is gonna look like. So thank you so much.
You are welcome. And again, we thank you, Ms. Green, for saying yes and for staying. And as trustee Espy pointed out, you are truly an ambassador. And we know this board, this district, we are risk takers, barrier breakers and change makers. And you embody that, right? That is who we are. And this is the fruit of that labor. So thank you for always saying yes and speaking life over this district, over our young people, over our families and over this community. We are so happy that you are in this new role with the tenacious trio. Congratulations, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have the approval of our assistant principal at Ypsilanti Community High School. Is there a motion at this time?
I move that the Board of Education approve the assistant principal at Ypsilanti Community High School contract of Zucata Brown with the commencement date of August 4, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by trustee Espy. Is there a support for this motion?
Trustee Fields, I support.
Thank you. Supported by trustee Fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Ms. McCarty, I know you took your seat and I know that, yeah, you're right back. Okay. I thought you took your seat. I saw you like out of the corner of my eye.
I never left the spot.
You did. Okay, all right. I will let you, we did it in reverse order this time, but we'll let you go ahead and say, we know this is also one of our outstanding members of our community. So I'll let you do the honors by introducing who we are considering tonight.
Thank you very much. So Ms. Brown is a prime example, just like Ms. Green is. She came into the classroom. She was an extraordinary teacher. And then they had her do podcasts where she accelerated as well. And then last year, we tried out an interim principalship as well as CTE director. She worked in the IB program. So she's just a prime example of the excellent educators that we have in the district. And we're so happy to welcome her. Thank you for approving her. And I will turn the floor over to you guys.
All right. Excellent. Well, to Superintendent Zachary Ross.
Yes, I'm so proud again of you as well. Congratulations. Please come so that you can address the board. Thank you, Mrs. Aquada Brown. People will always ask about the name, so I wanted to make sure to say it out loud.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be coming in as a teacher and then like being able to move up into leadership positions and teaching some of your babies that are from the board that are sitting before me. And I'm very excited to continue our work and build in our pathways to purpose. So thank you so very much for accepting my proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And again, thank you for saying yes. You've been doing amazing things in this district and your work is a testament to your commitment, your dedication, and just your stellar work as an educator and as a leader. So thank you and congratulations. I will open it up again to the board, so don't go anywhere.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, trustee Espy, first I want to apologize for saying, mispronouncing your name. I appreciate the correction. Names are very important. And so I appreciate knowing now how to properly address these with thank you. And I'm, again, very excited to see this happening within our district. I think particularly given our emphasis and our excitement around CTE work right now, it's really exciting to see that you're gonna be in a role within the principal's office, the assistant principal. And I think that's going to be a really great influence and support during this process and as we continue to grow and enhance our CTE programming. So I'm really excited for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Espy. Other comments from the board?
Ms. Brown? Yes. Thank you so much. We truly appreciate you and all that you do for Ypsilanti Community Schools. I know you're gonna be fantastic, so relax.
Thank you, yes.
Just relax, breathe, and go for it, girl. Because you gotta be great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
I echo everyone, what everyone has said here tonight. I do think YCS, one thing about YCS, we put you to work after getting doing the job. So I know you're well qualified to do it. And I know that along with you and Dr. Harris, Huguen, Harris Huguen, that you all are going to do a phenomenal job leading my alma mater.
Yes.
I look forward to all of the things you all are gonna continue to bring to the table. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again for continuing to serve here at YCS.
Thank you.
Yes, and I did. And I met you. And I'm so glad. I wanted to say congratulations again for that. And I want to love, I would love the podcast. My grandson, yes, I love the podcast. And it was very exciting to see that the students were able to come and at the graduation, they were very, very visual there. And I know that was a part of that and then different events that we have. So I really think that's really important that you've already made that connection. You know, I mean, now you're coming in leadership, but you've already made it. You were already a leader before you got the leadership thing. So it was good to see, you know, in full force out there what you were doing. And thank you again. The podcast, I think, was a big item for me here last year, seeing that and having our students so active and everything out there with the little mics and just interviewing people and being able to see those videos after, you know, after that. So, but again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. And you were one of the first people I met at the high school when I started my board service. And I think that was around the time that you started as interim assistant principal. So I'm just really excited for you to be taking this next step in your career. And as was mentioned earlier, thank you for continuing to serve. Thank you for everything that you've done. And I look forward to seeing what y'all do next year. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Ms. Brown. Welcome aboard. I guess it's really not welcome. Welcome to the new role. But again, we just have every confidence that you are going to do great things in this district as you have been. So we wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Before we move to our next agenda item, I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Zachary Ross for just a little background.
Thank you, Madam President. I meant to do this earlier, so it's a little backwards as well. So thank you. I wanted to just make sure to ensure that board just remembers about why we have these openings. We are developing, you know, we've had rising leaders. And for example, Ms. Brown was in rising leaders and has been a part of it. We have been really intentional about developing our leaders. And so therefore, how this all kind of started was a trickle-down effect. We knew, we had been working with Toyota and that the STEM coordinator job was open. We then waited the whole year because we wanted to make sure to have the correct candidate who will be working hand in hand with the STEM coordinator at Lincoln. They would also be our liaison at the steering committee meetings with Toyota and WISD and all of the driving possibilities, as you can see right there, all of the driving possibilities partners. So they will really be at the forefront. Well, we decided to make some additions to that role where there's some supervision type things of people. For example, we have a drone club. And so that person would connect with the STEM, at that time coordinator. We have the robotics program starting all the way at the elementary, all the way up to the high school. And so if they were going to do some of these things, in addition to approve some of the budgets for driving possibilities, like our field trips district-wide that are covered by that, we were expanding that cost amount request we're making with Toyota in addition to connecting our STEM curriculum with our work. So they would lead curriculum development as well. So we changed that to the Director of STEM Innovation, that position is paid for by driving possibilities. And so when we changed it to Director, Ms. Kelly Mickle, who was the principal at Erickson, was recommended for that role because of her extensive work, not only at Erickson with Leader and Me, also the work that she did at New Tech. It is very much aligned to the work that she would be doing in this role. And so as she moved to Director of STEM Innovation, that left the building, Erickson Elementary, our Leader and Me building, open for a principalship. At that time, Dr. Sharif, who had been working at Ys as principal, and both she and Ms. Mickle have been in those roles since before the consolidation. And that's a long time in one building and one role. And Ms. Mickle was really excited about expanding her role and thought change was needed. And with that conversation came Dr. Sharif saying, I also would like to take on the challenge. She's had a lot of success since the growing, you know, she grew at Ys from where it started to now. Let me go over to the Leader and Me opportunity. And as we've been really looking to see how we're going to push academics, she had those, the learner profiles really closely aligned to the Leader and Me profile and asked if she could go to Erickson to be the principal. So that left the Ys opening, as well as we're opening a new school. So we needed a principal at Ypsilanti Puentez Multilingual School. So we have not lost our administrators. I didn't want it to be perceived as we've lost. We've actually continued to develop today at the visual learning training. Many of them stood and talked and shared with Mr. Othier here how they had different roles in the district. So we looked at Ms. Dr. Harris Huguen. We had Brian Dickerson, who was the coordinator of our, when we had our other grant. So all these people who had come through our district, who are now in different roles and remain in our district. And so I just wanted to remind the board of that because it could look like, wow, why do we have all these openings? And truly, it's the development of our leaders and then moving to different roles. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam President.
Of course. Thank you so much for that background and that context and that good history to remind us of how we got here and how we continue to grow within our own district. And I just want to say congratulations again. We're just a few short weeks away from opening day. And I know. And I know everybody is tired and ready and excited and all the things. But this is always an exciting time of the year. And it's special to welcome our young scholars back to our district and our families back to our district because we're doing so much. And all, you know, we ever talk about outside of this room is like how we want to scream on the mountaintops, come to YCS, come to our buildings, come see what we're doing. And so people will, I know that they will. And I just appreciate everything that every person in this entire district does to make this work. So thank you. We going to clap. All right, board. So that takes us to our last item now, which was originally our first item. And that's the consideration of the superintendent contract. Just to remind the board, not that I need to remind the board, we met last month in closed session to talk about some of the amendments that were coming down for us to consider. And tonight, we are going to review those amendments and consider the contract. I just wanted to provide a few quick things before I take a motion, which is just to remind, and this is a reminder probably to the public as well, is that, you know, we started many, many years ago, and I say this because it's really important, but we started many, many years ago during my tenure on the board, which is when we brought the districts together. And we had a lot of debt. And many of us didn't know what it was going to look like five or 10 years down the road. And it's a constant reminder to me, and it's very humbling to see how far we've come in all of the great things that we are doing in this district. And so we have been in a position as of late to be able to pay our teachers more, to pay our administrators more, right? They deserve all that we can give them. But years ago, that wasn't our story. And I think it's just an important reminder, having that institutional knowledge, being on the board for so long, that we weren't always here. And the fact that we can nod and say to our administrators and give our administrators a 10% raise and 2% over the course, right? And to give our educators raises because they so deserve it. I just think it's important to just remember how far we've come and that we're in a position to be able to not just say, great job, right? But great job and acknowledge that, not just with words, but indeed to say that we value you, we appreciate you, we see you, we value you. I'm looking at Dr. Lopez because those are, respect you, value you, hear you, see you. And I know you've added some other things that have been kind of, you know, I don't know, love you, you know, all the things, right? But we do, it's more than just words, right? What we do says more and how we make people feel says more than what we say. And so I just wanted to kind of give that context. And, you know, everybody doesn't know all the behind the scenes work that this hardworking board does to review materials ahead of the meeting, to meet in special sessions, to meet in closed sessions. It's a labor of love. And we are honored that the community has entrusted us with this great responsibility to be able to sit here and do this work. So I just needed to say that because we value our superintendent. She has been here through the ups, the downs, the highs, the lows. And her vision and her purpose and her commitment has always remained clear. And she has been unwavering and unapologetic and has just demonstrated such stellar leadership and has been collaborative and just someone who brings everyone together and wants to speak life over our community and bringing our kids here and making sure they understand and know that they are valued here and that they can become and do anything they put their minds to. And that is not, that just doesn't happen by osmosis, right? It takes leadership, it takes the superintendent, it takes the team, it takes everyone to believe and to work and to stay committed. So I just had to say that because this board values the work that we do with each other, but we also value it as an eight-member team with our superintendent. So all that being said, I want to just provide some context points before we take a motion. As I mentioned, we met last month in closed session. We've had an opportunity to review the amendments that are before us. One of the things that I want to point out as we're looking at the contract is back in February 2023, as you all might remember, not the new board members because you weren't here then, but we did not have the correct annuity percentages in place for our superintendent. And so we had to make a correction on that. And so you'll see in the amendments that you are reviewing, board, that we had to make those corrections to make sure that the annuity percentages were correct for the superintendent. And in addition to that, we also wanted to make sure that the increases that we see here are also in alignment with and on pace with what has kind of happened across the district as well. So I just wanted to make those couple of few notes before we take a motion. And then I'll have more to say when I open it up for discussion from the board. So at this time, is there a motion to move, approve the superintendent contract?
Madam President, Vice President Lee, move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion? Rock, paper, scissors?
Trustee Espy, I support.
Thank you, supported by Trustee Espy. Any discussion from the board? Comments, questions? I know you all have all the materials, you reviewed everything ahead of time and asked great questions before we got here. But before we move forward, I just want to make sure there are no questions. There are some things certainly that I want to make sure, as I'm looking at the contract, you know, there are, there's just some language pieces. So under item B, under stipends and bonuses, we just want to make sure that the language also matches the previous contract as we're amending. And so that's something that we will make sure gets done so that it is clear what those, what that looks like in terms of the contract. I think the language here, it says it, but I think it's clear to be explicit about what that means for our superintendent. And I think the other thing that I noticed, I mean, if you notice typos or anything like that, please point them out and we'll just make sure that they get corrected before we sign the contract if the board, once the board considers and approves. I'll stop there, and if I have other things to say, I will. But board, do you have any comments before we move forward? All right, seeing none. Oh, go ahead, Vice President Lee.
I wasn't sure about the what was it? The or now, I know she already has her PhD. Now, are we keeping that part in? I know you and I talked about it.
That's up to the board, so.
I wasn't sure about what we were doing with that.
So board members, the, one of the adjustments that you'll see that was made, it's the educational stipend that we are referencing in the contract. So that is, that's for the board to consider if they would like that to stay in the contract. You know, these are the amendments. We will, the final version will have everything included in it, any adjustments that need to be made, typos that need to be fixed. But the discussion is open for what the board's pleasure is. So Vice President Lee, I hear you ask, you're asking.
It's number 12.
Which area is she?
Wait a minute.
Wasn't the educational one, it was taken out? Right.
Vice President Lee, I think, because it was in the 2023 contract.
Right.
So when we approved those amendments, the language in there was to make sure that we had a stipend in there to acknowledge that the superintendent was working towards and completing a PhD degree. The language also references that in acknowledgement of the PhD degree that that was of value to the role of the superintendency and the district. And so I believe Vice President Lee's question is, but correct me if I'm wrong, is if that's something the board wants to consider putting back in? Is that accurate, Vice President Lee, or no?
No, so that was taken out then?
It was.
Okay.
Yep, the only thing that's left is credentials, meaning if there's licenses and certifications that she has to maintain, then we will
Cover that, of course.
Which I'm good with.
Absolutely.
Good with that too. I just wasn't sure because I didn't see. Okay.
Okay. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
And I guess the only thing for me, probably, this is going to be the contract. You're just going to go over and mic some type errors. I would just move over five, six, seven, all the way over to the left to make it read like a contract, like everything else.
The indenting is
Oh, the spacing.
If you can move it all, everything is
Because it's not left justified.
Yeah, so make it read like a contract, you know what I mean?
Thank you for that feedback.
I had a question to confirm that the fees for regarding licensing and certification are covered under, professional expenses are covered under the reimbursement category?
Correct.
And not the educational stipend category in the contract?
Yeah, because the educational stipend category is not in there anymore.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to name that I'm happy that we are in a position to retain Dr. Zachary Ross
Yes.
in the district. And that she is willing to continue with us.
Yes, indeed. And any language, I know that like if you look at under annuity C, and I'm making a note of it, and I want to make sure the final contract reflects this, we want to make sure that language is not 8% because it should be 12%. And then it increases 1% annually under the old contract terms. Under the new contract terms, it would be 2%. So that's something that would need to be adjusted, yep.
With the cap of 20% as well?
With a cap of 20%, correct. Yes, Trustee Sutton Kennedy.
Okay, so the 12 got to change too, right? Every reading, okay. Because I was wondering, you know, I kept looking through, trying to find out where I was, like, where is that at? I was looking at it, and I don't see that on here.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, our attorney just has to make sure the language matches. And that's an easy fix, we just
Oh, yeah, it is, but I was just looking for that.
Yeah, I'm just saying it so that we can, we know that. And before we sign it, we just want to make sure everything is right for Dr. Zachary Ross.
So it capped at 20% instead?
Yes.
And the annual is how much? It's not 8%, it's how much?
12.
12.
And it caps at 20.
20.
Yep.
Yeah, and then remove one of those periods when they do that too.
Oh, I see it, let me cross it out.
Two of them, two of them in there.
Yes, I see, dot, dot.
In 12, 6B. So just so make sure we're on the same page. For the completion, the portion that says the completion of the 27, 28 school year, is there way it can reference how we got there? So like, whatever the language was in the 2023 contract, I think it was a little bit more clear. How was written, it would work, but I'm just saying, I think we added more detail for those two years.
The 2026, 2027, and 2027, 2028?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So just to recap, reference how we got here, and you want the language, your request is that the language mimics the previous 2023 contract?
Yeah, just so, so it, it just, it's very clear.
Okay.
I mean, it, how it's written, it will work, but I, you know, I just think when you're more clear, you're clear.
Can I clarify that?
Clarify.
Yes, I am. That it could be interpreted as per year. You want to make sure that is captured, that it is
Yes.
after the two years are completed, not each year.
Versus individual year.
Yeah, that's the way it was structured and written for the previous contract. So it would just be kind of a continuation of that. But that's something that I've noted and captured. Yep, you're welcome. All right. Just to recap, a motion was made by Vice President Lee, and it was supported by Trustee Espy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations and thank you for saying yes. Dr. Zachary Ross, would you like to say anything?
I would just, again, like to thank the board for your consideration, just always being so supportive. I know that the other one was ending in typically, what was it, in June. And so thank you for looking at this. And it's been a pleasure serving here. It's certainly been a pleasure. And I think back to that first contract when we did have 3,100 students and now we're counting at 4,000 students. I think back about the debt and all of the support this team did along with our other community members of going to Lansing and making the cause and just the fact that I was thinking about, we had to put $5 million in fund balance set aside because we didn't know if we were going to have enough.
Yes.
And it had to be set aside dollars. And the fact that we now have 20% fund balance is just, it's the work of the support that you all have had. And when Celeste talks about, Ms. Green talks about, you can't do that work and be innovative, can't be those barrier breakers and risk takers and change makers without the board's support. Because we've made a lot of risks, even I think about during the pandemic and opening the building. Like, we couldn't get to this many students and have leaders developing without your ongoing support. So I cannot thank you enough.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Zachary Ross. You know, I said a lot earlier before we, you know, even took a motion and considered and approved and discussed. But, but I, you know, it goes without saying, and I had to give that context and history because you can forget, right? You could forget that we were a district saddled with debt. And now we are not a district saddled with any debt. But that didn't happen either by osmosis, right? It took leadership, it took advocacy, it took a lot of like literally boots on the ground. And for years, we weren't even sure if it was going to be a reality. But I think it's a testament to your leadership and all the hard work that you have put in and how you grow and how you develop other people who are around you as just a collaborative and a humble leader. Servant leadership, I think about that phrase, and I think about you and just how much you've brought to this community and how much you've brought to this district. So we are really, really fortunate because, you know, we see things, right? We know what's happening in our world, we know what's happening in other districts. And we're fortunate to have you here, committed, dedicated, and always keeping our students front and center. So thank you. Any questions or comments, board members, before we move on? Go ahead.
No, I mean, I echo everything that President Hawke has said. You know, many asked, even when I was taking on this journey, you sure you want to do that? And it has been a positive experience. I think YCS is a leader in many ways. A lot of districts are watching us simply because, you know, we have came through the fire. You know, Shaka Khan through the fire, you know? So I want to say I
Shaka Khan through the fire, you know, so, um, I, I, I want to say I appreciate you. I appreciate all the work you've done. And I look forward to seeing what's to come. Yeah, you definitely keep us busy. I appreciate you said. Um, and I just think it's a, it's a testament of who we are as a district. So thank you. Um, you can only be defined a lot of times by your leaders. And so I, I just think it's very important that we make sure that we, um, be an example of how you create good leadership and, and how support really looks for leaders um, to make strong districts. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson.
I'll just say ditto to everything that's already been said and thank you for everything you do and all the time, energy, effort, every day, day in, day out. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sutton Kennedy. Yes.
I just want to name that, um, as the superintendent, you are often the voice and the face of the district. Um, and you have represented that so well and you have not only done your work, but have brought in incredible talent into the district. Um, and I think that's a testament to who you are and how you show up because educators and staff want to work with you. Um, and just like we do as a board, we like to work with you. Um, and I've seen that shift and I've seen the growth of, as we saw even with our principals, the staff coming up within the district um, because of the investment, um, we have seen. And I think that starts with you. So thank you.
And yes, I wanted to say thank you, ditto every, everything, um, everybody else has said. And also say, um, if they're talking about, you must be doing something good, right? Cause they wouldn't be talking, right? Yes, that's really what that saying is. That's my grandma used to always say, you must be doing something good if they talking about you. So we must be doing something good over here, YCS.
True words. Thank you, Trustee Fields. All right, board, uh, thank you, uh, again, Dr. Zachary Ross, and that takes us to action item, um, number seven under business and finance. Mm-hmm, we did. It's okay.
Madam.
It's all right. It is all right.
Are you ready? Okay, okay. I'm gonna let you off hook. So, so we move, Madam President. You want me to motion?
Yeah, thank you. You ready?
Okay, I was ready.
Thank you, Trustee Fields. I appreciate you.
Uh, Madam President, um, Trustee Fields, I moved that the Board of Education approved the visible learning cer- certification contract with Corwin for seventy-five thousand, thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Trustee Sutton Kennedy.
Thank you. Supported by Trustee Sutton Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to action item number eight. Well, it's not an action item, it's our public comment. Um, did any? I'm not sure if any public comment cards have come in, but I see Ms. Hayes is checking for us. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Before I invite the member of the public who is here wishing to address the board, I want to read the public comment protocol, which reads as follows. Pursuant to Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-seven-point-three, the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express their views. Please limit statements to three minutes in duration. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually and all remarks shall be made in a respectful and professional manner. Uh, Jeremy Haley.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Haley, Ypsilanti Township. Congratulations on the renewal of the contract. Uh, what I like to talk about is population education because that's a big thing. Everybody knows fertility rates are decreasing. And if you look at the current charts and graphs, they're at a negative thirty to forty-five degree slope for a lot of countries, including the U.S., and it pretty much started in the year twenty-twenty-one. Go figure. That's not the topic for this discussion though. But, uh, I know out of the districts in Washtenaw County, Ypsilanti's one has grown the most. And at the past, some of the past meetings, you know, this, this superintendent had said that, uh, after Federal Count Day, there'd been numerous kids that had entered and she had mentioned, hopefully they stay so we can get paid for them. That kind of flustered me a little bit because these are kids, you know, not money. What I mean? And it took me time to get to where I'm going. And at another meeting, uh, you know, the one person talking about Spanish person program in the same sentence and paragraph was talking about population decline, people in the area aren't having kids. And after that, I said, why would, you know, they started Spanish and immersion program? Then I, you know, use the AI, whatnot, and said, what are the Hispanic birth rates in the United, you know, US? They're higher than whites, higher than blacks. It's like, you know, it calls into question. And in the same thing, she mentioned a local community center that was possibly helped facilitating some of this movement of these families into the area and the kids into the schools. And this is why it took some time later when Doge was going and wreaking their havoc and things. They had mentioned this local community center that they were owed millions of dollars by the federal government for relocating these people to the area. And that really upset me anymore. These are people, not money, all right? That really upsets me. You guys are doing a good thing, but at what cost? And then all these people that did come over, there are bad things that happened to the kids and the women and the people that did. There's documentaries and you, that's, you're doing, you gotta look at the good with the bad comes with that. A new doc, documentaries out called Six Seven, From Six Seven Seven about Sin Frontier, about the moving of the people across the border and up from there. This is what these people had to go through. And they're being, I just see them being treated as money. That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Jeremy Haley. Um, normally it is not our practice as a board to address comments that come before the board, but certainly because this board has always been so committed to our scholars and our parents and our community. Um, I think it's important to just allow the superintendent to say a few words about Count Day and, and, and maybe what, I don't know what the comment was, so I can't really speak to it. But I know that this board never looks at our children as numbers. Um, and we are deeply invested and committed. Um, I appreciate your comments. Um, and they touch me and that's the reason why I'm, you know, making sure I, I say something because we normally don't address members of the public, but it's important because our words matter, right? And so I'll let Dr. Zachary Ross, um, say a few words and then we'll go to the next agenda item. So thank you again.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the comment because we want to ensure that our families and under, really truly understand that our scholars, when we say we see you, hear you, value you and respect you, we don't just say it. And when we talk about being stronger together, we, every time we have an opportunity, haven't, we really say, say how we show it. And so, um, part of how we have shown it, um, number one is to welcome all of our scholars. We ensure that all year round, we are opening our doors and make sure that the transitions, especially of those scholars that come in, if it's after Count Day, that meant they missed a lot of our intentional work that happens to create that place of belonging so that we ensure number one, that those scholars feel welcomed when they come here, that there are intentional people there to welcome them, like a climate and culture coach in every building, an instructional coach in every building who can meet those scholars where they are. One of the things that we do talk about, which is important for us to be physically responsible, is the fact that in Michigan, unfortunately, the dollars do follow our scholars and are there just on Count Day. And so we, as, um, this administration, especially under the leadership of this board, has continued to provide that support financially um, to our schools by adding social workers in every building, a thirty-one A social worker, as well as a special education social worker, no matter at that time, when we were not having the scholars, um, with the numbers with us. You've continued to keep the level of support, especially after COVID, a lot of districts brought in, brought the sta- reduced the staff. We have kept our level of staffing and so that, that is at a cost. So I know I talk about the cost because that's important for us to know. That's the way we get our, that is the way we get our funding. And so we really make sure that people understand that that is how, um, how our state aid is counted. And it's important for us to have that conversation as the board to know how many we're actually looking at in your budget that you adopt, how many scholars are, are there? Not putting numbers, uh, money to it that they're money, but this is your budget. This is how we pay all of our staff and ensuring that this money is there. We know right now, this is a big conversation across the United States because additional funds are being withheld. We've seen that. Um, and those additional funds come from, um, US Department of Ed. So some of those Title One funds and Title Two and Title Three funds, um, are, are, we don't know if we're gonna have all those funds in the future. We do know we're gonna have our state aid. That is something that the board counts on, uh, and really looks at and to ensure that we are able to meet the expectation of our staff, which is to ensure that those, uh, things that Dr. Hawkins talked about, that collective bargaining agreement. We have to make sure that we can meet the, the, the necessarily fun, funds that are tied to that. And so those funds come directly from our state aid, which is directly aligned to our count. And so that's why that's important for us to have that conversation. And the additional funds, we are grateful for. We just know that they, the categorical funds, we don't know if we're going to have them every year and they are not as stable for us. And so that's why that conversation comes. In terms of, um, having students to, um, be a part of the dual immersion, I want to remind the board um, that our numbers have grown. We've had three hundred students alone, um, that have identified as multilingual learners um, and have come to YCS just last year. Our numbers continue to increase and, um, because of that, we've opened two newcomer centers and a structured program at our high school to ensure that when those scholars come, that they can, their academic needs are met. We have not gone to recruit, um, those, um, scholars. The families have come because of that. Where the context of the dual immersion program, we know that as we're, uh, opening that building, we have had, we started with, uh, first grade and we continue to move forward and those scholars were in our, uh, local schools. We knew the recommendation of four best practice was fifty percent Spanish speaking scholars, native Spanish speaking. And then fifty percent of that class was to, um, be English learners so that they can learn from one another. We understand the history, uh, as our new principal started off at the Academy of Americas uh, in Detroit where the dual immersion program, uh, had really had its heart and start. Um, she talked about those best practices. So, um, they are not our newcomers. I want to be real clear, they are not the newcomers. The newcomer centers are still in our, uh, schools and those, those are still happening where the sheltered language happens. Um, those scholars have, uh, came at, again, they have to start in that program. And so one of the things they talked about was, um, how do you ensure that people who come are scholars who do integrate, how are they able to onboard? So typically if they're from a dual immersion, a previous dual immersion program, they're pretty, they're very successful. And so a lot of those, uh, parents at the preschool program in which Ms. Jaeger was talking about, they are very much interested in a true dual immersion program. And so that was, that's where the context of that conversation and most of those, um, scholars, I don't know, any of them that are newcomers, as a matter of fact. Can I verify that with you? Are those, because the newcomers go to the newcomer program, the dual immersion, um, families are just ones who enroll, just like our other magnet programs into, um, and they are not there to get that structured support. Um, as a matter of fact, we've seen the, the data has shown us over time that those scholars in, um, in the dual immersion are, are actually get more accelerated by knowing both languages. And so we've been watching that data. We asked for the building to be open because we were growing. Um, with us having the magnet program at Ford Early Learning Center, we, we needed that classroom. We needed the space. It's growing. Um, because of the STEAM Magnet Grant, we're really excited about it. And part of how we are being responsible is knowing that as we get those funds from magnet, we have to show that growth. We have to report on that growth quarterly. And so by removing um, the, that, the, uh, dual immersion program from Ford, it really gives that opportunity for Ford to grow clearly as the STEAM Magnet and that data can be nice and clear so that when we're reporting to the US Department of Ed, we can show, um, that we've met our obligations. Uh, and so I'm really excited about the fact that we see that, we saw that there was a need and, um, we had the building of open. That program came to you because you do hear from the staff. We know that that team brought this idea, um, to the board for consideration. It wasn't Dr. Lopez and I idea. Um, they talked about the reason that they can collaborate together. They were trying to collaborate across buildings. Um, and that staff meetings were for regular staff meetings and they were having to spend time on their own to meet. We also knew we were, um, gra- adding a fourth grade and there was no spaces to add, um, that fourth grade, uh, class. And so, um, we were, are now again being physically responsible by using that building space that we already had to have heated. We already had to have a custodian. We have moved special services in there by themselves. And so this allows for the opportunity for that program to grow seamlessly K eight, not just, uh, have to move grade levels because it's important that they stay, um, together and are consistent. So just reminding you of the why behind, um, behind that move. Um, it was a great opportunity to use that building in a wonderful way at a low cost. And so you are making that, making the decision to move at this time while we had the, uh, funds from K three twenty-one, while we were able to, um, utilize the building because we did not use that building for academic purposes. And over a year, it has to then, um, be relooked at in terms of building usage. And so you knew you were going to do something with it. And this, the data for the numbers of, of students increasing, we already see over a hundred and sixty students enrolled. So that was a need and there's an interest in this community for, um, a true dual immersion program.
Thank you, Dr. Zachary Ross, for that context and for that additional history on the why, um, and how we got here. Board, we are, um, I'm not sure if any board members wanted to say anything before I moved on. Um, I see that our midterm monitoring session is item number nine. However, item ten is the request for a closed session. We know that this, uh, can be requested as a closed session and we received, um, a request to make sure that this, uh, monitoring session was held in closed session. So before we can move into that, um, I guess I would propose to the board, um, a couple of things. Uh, one, that we take a motion to go into closed session, but I just wanted to check in with the board to see if you need a five-minute break. Okay. All right. So, um, let's take a five-minute break and then we will, uh, take a motion to go into closed session. And then at that time, I'm not sure if it makes more sense for us to stay in this. And then at that time, I'm not sure if it makes more sense for us to stay in this room. Okay, to stay in here and then. Yes, there's a lot going on in that room. So board, we will stay in here. If you need to get up, stretch, do whatever you need to do. And then we'll come back. We'll go into closed session. And those who are here will have to wait until our closed session is over and they'll be invited back in. So we are on a five-minute recess at 7:51. We'll reconvene at 7:55. I mean, I'm sorry, 7:56. I'm trying to short you off your break.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Got it. Yvonne. Yvonne. Start your video, Yvonne.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, the board has come back from a short recess and at this time, I would like to take a motion for a request for a closed session.
Madam President, Vice President Lee, move that the Board of Education convene in closed session under eight, I'm sorry, under section 8A of the OMA to consider a personal evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion?
I support.
Thank you. Supported by Trustee Espy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. The Board of Education is in closed session at 8:10 PM. Is the door when you? Okay, and we can go offline now. Thank you.
Yes.
Are we ready? Okay. Okay, thank you. The time is 9:29. The Board of Education has reconvened back into open session. The next item on our agenda is under discussions. Are there any subcommittee reports this evening from the board?
Finance operations, everything looks like it's... I've seen a lot of landscaping done and different projects. Of course, our maker spaces are being... has been installed. And I know at the middle school. So I'm very happy to see the end result. But Director Birchwell is doing... his team is doing an excellent job. Mr. Butler, of course, is getting everybody paid. We love that. So I'm very excited about what's going on with my committee.
Thank you, Trustee Townsend. And always thank you for your leadership and work as the chair of that committee. Any other subcommittee reports at this time?
Vice President Lee, all the subcommittees are on vacation. We will...
They'll reconvene.
...be in October.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Lee. Appreciate all the updates you always give us. Anything else from our subcommittees? C. Non, any board superintendent comments? Any board comments? We'll start there first.
I have one.
Yes.
And I just wanted to thank everybody for your continued support.
And I just wanted to thank everybody for your continued support and education. When I have questions and, you know, just in general for everything, I just wanted to say thank you.
You are welcome. Ask as many questions as you want to.
Trustee Aspe, I'm just excited to see all the engagement that YCS has had throughout the summer with our scholars. I had the opportunity to attend a three-on-three tournament in basketball over at, in West Willow and saw so many young people out there having a really great time. They were getting, there was Italian ice and donuts and hot dogs from our meetup eat-up staff. Yeah, something like, and so it was just really great to see so many folks out there and enjoying and being connected to the schools even throughout the summer.
Thank you, Trustee Aspe, and thank you, Trustee Sutton Kennedy.
I'd like to special shout out because the inflatables that were out there, that is owned by a YCS 2020 graduate.
Oh, that's great.
Who is actually my niece, Nike Avon. So. I too just thank the board and a lot of engagement that you've had over the summer. You all have invites for Friday event where YCS is a major partner. We have some graduates coming from Park Ridge and it would be good. And I do want to acknowledge that our board president came out and saw me in my element. It was entertaining, but we had a good time. And it's just, it's been a long, enjoyable summer. We, doesn't seem like we had a break, but I'm looking forward to 2026. What is this, 2025, 26 school year? So let's do this.
Thank you, Trustee Townsend. Any other board comments?
Okay. I'm leaving on Wednesday for a family reunion in Memphis. My son can't go because he's on the list for his double lung transplant. He has to be four hours within the hospital. So if they call, I'mma call everybody. I'mma say, pray it be close in case something happen to my son, okay? Y'all be ready to go up to UAB for me because I'm on my way home because it's a 12-hour drive from Memphis, okay? So just be on standby for me and pray because I know they're gonna call when I'm out of town. So pray for me, guys. That's all. Thank you and thank each and every one of y'all. And I appreciate you and I love all of you.
Thank you, Vice President Lee, without you. The only thing that I would just add to what already has been said is just to echo the sentiments of the engagement over the summer. The grounds across the district everywhere we drive around look great. The signs are up. The grounds look fantastic. Back-to-school bash this past Saturday was outstanding. I, Trustee Sutton Kennedy was over there manning tables and passing out things. We ran out of, I mean, it was, I got there, I think at 12:05 and it was like 3 million people there. It was, it was, it was packed, but it was, it was outstanding. It spoke to what we have been doing for year, year after year after year in this community and able to support so many of our scholars and their families. Board retreat is next week. I'm looking forward to it. And thank you for the invite, Trustee Townsend. It was amazing work that I saw you in action wearing a whole nother hat at Park Ridge with the babies and just the engagement and the field trips. I had a whole tour. I was excited. So, you know, if my schedule is clear, I'll be there Friday. So thank you for all you're doing in the community. You're doing great work with the kids at Ipsy. I can't think of anything else. So the time is not, well, not yet because Superintendent Zachary Ross has to go. And I know, I know, yes. If you need to go, yes. Have a good night. Yes, Dr. Zachary Ross.
Yes, well, again, I'm really brief. I just wanted to again thank the board for your support and the contract and thank you for the hiring of our amazing new leaders. I'm really, really excited about just what's happening. To, you have a draft agenda of the board retreat that's coming to you? Oh, thank you. It's just a draft with some, on the back it has the addresses too so that you can know where to go. But again, this is our draft agenda. We're looking forward to that work with you. You also have, this is our tip, this is our administrator's calendar, but I wanted you to see, see, see some of it because I was going to give some dates and I thought I had enough copies, so I wanted to make sure to share with you. Because August, I can't believe we're already at August. Our principals returned on Friday and then they started today with the visible learning. There's professional development going on right now at Ford. We know last week Homes had their ambassadors and, and President Hawkins. I told them they could come for a point of pride. I took personal privilege because they, I knew you would be so excited to see the Homes ambassadors and what that looks like and what it means to have them come to a board, upcoming board meeting at that, during that place. We, I can't believe, but next, the August 11th New Teacher Book Camp is already happening. So they work, you know, we work collaboratively with the MEA. So they will be coming in. We'll be telling them about retirement options. There's quite a bit, quite a few people collaborating with Ms. McCarty and the team. So that's exciting. We have rising leaders that will be coming in to get the fourth cohort cohort. So they come in during that time as, along with Wise Professional Development because we know that they are up for reauthorization for their IB time. So you'll see that. The board retreat is happening and we're ready for that. Then we have, we're going into the ribbon cutting, cutting August 18th of Pointess. That's also the day of the board meeting, so that's why that's at 5:30. Because we want to make sure that's the first day that that building can be ready according to our custodial staff and, and everyone. So we're going to have the ribbon cutting so that the staff can get ready for opening day. I shared with you in the board update about opening day. We're excited to have Mr. Tom Burton to come as the speaker. He does align his work with our visible learning work. Then they have classroom setup and it is over at the middle school, which is the Lincoln Community Middle School because that is where we have enough space for the auditorium to happen. Then on the 20th, we're having a conference. I know you've seen us have the unconference before. We're having a conference also at the middle school. If you can be there for the opening, the opening is just real, it starts at eight with Mama Soul. If you've ever heard her speak, she is talented and gifted and can connect with our scholars and our staff. So she does that bridge over. She uses music and lyrics and poetry to connect with that message. And then we'll break out into three conference sessions for the staff. You see also on the 20th of August, the welcome back evening. So the middle school and Ipsy connected is having their welcome to the families. And we do have, as you saw in the back room, those are backpacks. We have backpacks for our scholars. We knew that sometimes back-to-school bash is lots of people in the community, not necessarily our scholars, and we run out oftentimes of, in our, once they get to school, they don't have a backpack. So we will have backpacks at the welcome nights on the 20th as well as on the 21st. There are our elementaries and early learning centers have their opening and welcome nights at that time. We have, again, our AI conference because people talk about the tools and things that we give our, Scott, our, our teachers like using the BenQ board. They have a lot of training on how to use things and implement, make, implement strategies with our technology at that conference. It's not purely just AI. It's how to use tools. And our first day of school is on the first. What I don't have on there, I mean, 25th. I'm reading the first day. We do have what's really exciting and I'll have to get the date. Our transportation kickoff is happening and it's not on here. Our transportation kickoff, that is, that is new. Yes, it's the same day as the AI conference, the 22nd. And that is going to be really exciting because oftentimes parents have questions about routes. We have a, because we are using the new Versage train system, it's kind of, it's versa. It's the updated one because before our apps never worked. You couldn't see where the buses were. This is rolling out the new app so they get to meet their bus. There are drivers and monitors. There's going to be bouncy houses and food and different things to attract the families there. Because we, it is exciting to get your bus route, but it's more exciting when there's bouncy houses and other things. So they are coming. The transportation staff will all be there to have buses if people have never ridden the bus, they can get on a bus. They can, they'll learn how to use the app and answer questions that they might have to try to, again, build that sense of community. And it's the first time we're trying it, so we're really thrilled to be able to do that.
That's great.
And you have this book for the, it goes with the board retreat, the whole district. I don't know, have you heard of Banana Savannah, the team? It's, it's a sports team. You're going to get a quick history about it on, at the board retreat. So bring the book, but the, and the whole district is, as you roll it out, the strategic plan, it's all about the fans and serving our, serving the fans. And that's what they learned. That's the long story short about Jessica and what they learned is let's make this engagement experience one that's amazing. And so they talk about eliminating barriers, always entertaining and, and keeping people involved like that transportation piece. And so there's five pillars to it and we'll be reading this as a district. And I wanted you to have it in advance because we're going to be talking about bands first and that's part of why we have some more fun things in your retreat as well. So that, that's part of what it talks about as one of the big components of the E's. So looking forward to doing this work with the whole district. And that's, again, talk about a way to engage families. That's what it says, the other is engage always. And so how are we doing that? We can use the lessons from the Banana Savannah, Savannah Banana experience. That's why you have the book. Please bring it with you. And I just thought you might want it, want to look, look at it just to kind of browse through it before.
Thank you. Anything else from the board before we move to adjourn? This has been time well spent together. I just want to say a huge thank you to, of course, the superintendent, the leadership team, everyone who was here this evening and especially Mary who has been here with us just forever, it feels like, right? But you always bring such a wealth of knowledge and you have the institutional knowledge because you've been here with us through the ups and the downs. And we appreciate your presence, your facilitation and how you are always cheering us on every step of the way. So thank you for your leadership always and for being here to support our community and especially our district and our scholars. Thank you. All right, it is 9:45. This regular Board of Education meeting is adjourned.